Good morning. We are glad to have you with us this morning at the Fosteria Area Chamber of Commerce's 2021 City Council Candidate Forum. This morning's event will be recorded and distributed to the Chamber and FEDC members, as well as linked on our social media platforms and our websites. We have a small audience here with us this morning who are socially distanced as we are working to observe safety protocols. So let's begin with a few introductions. I will be your host this morning and moderator for today's forum. My name is Sarah Stevenskrupp, and I am Chamber Small Business Director for the Fosteria Area Chamber of Commerce. With me is Renee Smith, President of Fosteria Economic Development Corporation, and she will be our timer this morning. Also present this morning is Mayor Eric Keppler, current City Council members Greg Cassidy, who is an At-Large Representative, and Ed Logstine, who is also an At-Large Representative. Our 2021 City Council candidates present are Brandon Kaiser, who is running for Ward One, Don Manel, running for Ward Three, the other candidate Nikki Brown has officially withdrawn from this race. Candidates for Ward Four are incumbent Tom Lake, Todd Burgoyne, and Michael Spencer. We did reach out to Brett Thomas, however, we did not receive a response. So we will begin this morning by inviting Mayor Eric Keppler to provide us with a brief overview of the proposed 1% income tax renewal levy. Mayor Keppler?
Thank you, Sarah. So this is the five-year renewal of our 1% income tax levy. This one is roughly one-half of the income tax collections for the city of Fosteria. So obviously, not having this renewed would have a huge impact on the community, and the fact that the general fund is where the income tax goes to, which is how we fund our police department, our fire department, and EMS, the parks department. There's a piece for beautification, which is everything you see throughout the city, downtown area flower beds, and the person who waters the flowers to keep the community looking so nice in the banner program that we had through the downtown area. And we collected roughly $6.6 million from the two 1% levies. One is a permanent 1% levy, and then we have this five-year renewal for this current one that we would like to have renewed, because it would have an impact on all of our safety forces that I spoke about. Plus, another piece that lives inside there is our repaving program. And we were able to use some of that money to help repave County Line in the last few years. And in the next five years, we have two state highway repaving projects, one in the mid-block area from the Hancock-Seneca line over by J.D. Twisters down the underpass to Main Street, projected to be in a 2023 paving, and then a projected 2024 repaving of the rest of the Lido Street, starting at Mid-Block Underpass east to the 23 underpasses, and then out 23 south to the city limits. So those are two huge paving projects by the state that would be impacted, because we need to have an 80/20 match for those projects. So we're asking that you continue to support what we've been doing and the progress we've been making in renewal of that income tax levy, and keep our safety forces and our momentum going with getting our repaving done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will now proceed to our candidate forum. Candidates have been seated by ward, and if there are multiple candidates for the ward, they have been seated in alphabetical order by last name. Questions asked of the candidates have not been provided to them ahead of time. Questions were submitted by Chamber and FEDC members and compiled by Chamber staff into the questions we will be asking today. Candidates were asked to come with a prepared brief opening and closing statement, not to exceed three minutes. The order of introductions will begin with Ward One and move down the table. The same questions will be asked of each candidate, and a time limit for answering and who will answer first will be given when the question is asked. The order of answering each question will move down the table until all candidates have answered the question. Renee will signal each candidate with this motion. When they have 30 seconds left to answer, when your time is up, you will hear a bell. When the bell rings, we ask you to immediately stop as we will be moving on to the next candidate or the next question. There will be no opportunities for rebuttals or candidates to ask questions of one another. Are there any questions before we begin? Okay. Mr. Kaiser, please begin with your prepared introduction. Remember, you have three minutes, and Renee will give you the time signal and the bell if appropriate.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Kaiser. I'm 33 years old. I have lived most of my life right here in Fosteria. Nine of those years being right here in Ward One. I have seen this town building with stores, restaurants, and businesses of all sorts, and I've seen this town as a low point toward the one direction it's up. Our town has so much to offer for those who live here and for the surrounding areas. All it takes is us as a community to stand up and push forward to make the necessary changes. As a candidate of Ward One, I want to do just that. For the next four years, if I am elected as Ward One, I have areas I'd like to help the city improve, not only just for my ward, but for the entire community. Some of those areas are community parks and rec areas, trying to help bring more businesses back in our community, and additional community cleanup. I would like to try to help work with the City Grand Rider to see if there's other funding we can find in Ward Grants that we can give us the ability to improve our parks and our rec areas, to give kids more areas to play in, more for us as adults to enjoy as well. I'd like to see if there's any way we can look at the old location of the city pool. It's a place that's been vacant for a while. We've not been able to do much with it. Ideally, I know we can't reopen the pool, I mean, the expense could be too high for the city, and it'd be nice if we can find a way to repurpose that property. I'd like to also see if there's a way that I can work with the Chamber of Commerce, Small Business Association, and other offices in the community to help go out and pursue more small businesses that come set shut up right here in Fosteria. Being as we don't have a lot of department stores or major competitors, with all the highways we have here, it is a great spot for small businesses to open up. They'll have a chance to thrive, bring more revenue to the city, and bring more options to us to buy right here locally versus to go out of town. Another area I'd like to work in, too, is community cleanup. We've all seen areas in all of our wards that are not the greatest that could use a little more help from the residents a little bit of our wards. I'd like to try to find ways to organize little events to get more of our residents of our wards to get out there and do community cleanups, go out there through maybe the edges of the parks, the edges of the city properties, or even their neighbors, and help them get trash debris, things that just make it look bad, help that area improve. That way, the nicer our city looks, and the more self-pride we'll take in our city, and the more we can bring back here.
Thank you. Mr. Manel?
My name is Don Manel. My family dates back to 1886 in Fosteria, when my great-grandfather came to town to build the flower mill. In 1877, when the mill was completed and the company incorporated, my grandfather recruited Governor Charles Foster to serve on the Board of Directors. Governor Foster served on the Board of Directors until his death in 1904. So our family roots go back a long time. I am chairman of Ares of the Minot Hill Company. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in English Language and Literature. I have a master's degree in Business Administration. I currently serve on the Fosteria Financial Planning and Supervision Committee overseeing the financial status of the city. I also am serving on the Fosteria Charter Review Committee. I know and understand the finances of the city, as well as the city charter and the governance of the city. I believe I am uniquely qualified to serve on City Council to help guide the city out of its current financial situation, as well as to help develop five- and 10-year plans for financial stability, parks and land use, and strategic direction of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burgoyne?
Good morning. My name is Todd Burgoyne. I'm 48 years old. I do not have the history or longevity of being in town, as these two gentlemen over here. I'm originally from a small town in Putnam County, Fort Jensen, Ohio. Graduated '26 in my class, so I'm used to small towns. I joined the military. I was in the Navy for 13 years, traveled all over the world, seen things, done things, witnessed things that would make your head spit. One thing my military background gave me was an appreciation, a huge appreciation for what we have in this country. There's nothing else like it in the world. And I will stand, and I will fight for this country, even if I'm not in service, I'm still going to fight, because this is the best thing going. We've got problems, yes, but this is the best thing going. I want to be a part of that, and be a part of City Council, and step forward. I like what Brandon was saying earlier about the different topics he brought up. The pool is one thing. I'd like to go ahead and address that. You need to find some... I like the parks. We need to work on the parks. The pool, we need to repurpose. It's too far gone, too expensive to fix. We need to find something else to do with it, but it needs to be something for the kids, because it's right there just for the park anyway. So we need to find something there. I lived here, moved here in 2012, so I've been here almost eight years, nine years now. So I've seen the ups and downs. I came in on bid and witnessed the low point when we were in our financial woes. I've tried twice for the At-Large positions. The two gentlemen behind me beat me out. Congratulations to them. I want to still be a part of this. I'm a current member, life member of the FFW. I'm a senior vice commander from folks over at Tiffin. So I've got that kind of background. I want to make this town a little bit better. I want to do what I can, make everyone a cohesive unit, so we can be the best town we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lake?
Well, my name is Thomas Lake. I'm a current fourth ward City Council, running for reelection. I'd like to thank the Chamber for having this forum, so we had a chance to speak. I've lived in Fosteria for 59 years and retired from Odilex Spark Plug after 30 years of service. I'm currently fourth ward City Council, was elected in 2003. I have been on council for 17 years. I'm running for reelection this year, currently serving on the Public Affairs Committee, the Airport Committee, and I'm council president pro temp, appointed by council for the last 10 years. I've helped change the city government to a charter city government with bipartisan election, to help change two-year term council to a four-year term, which is terrible to constantly run for office, so we can get something done. I've helped remove council insurance from council members. Paula Dill and I fought that for two years to get the council people from using city insurance, health insurance, to save the city money, worked with Fosteria Economic Development to bring businesses and jobs here, and they were doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
Hi, my name is Michael Spencer. I'm a graduate of Fosteria High, 1971. I'm not going to figure it out the rest of it as to what are you doing now, but it's close. I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor, Smith, and Sarah for having us here. I'm a retiree from the Chrysler Corporation. When the casting plant moved or closed here, I moved out to the state of Delaware. Didn't know they had an assembly plant. I found out the hard way they do. I spent 15 years out that way. More than part of it was in Philadelphia, because I was actually injured on the job working in Delaware. I studied under some of the top-known photographers out there, so I am a professional fashion photographer. But then I came back in mid-to-late 90s, because my daughter was having her second child, which she's amazing, by the way. And now I have four grandsons, because she wanted a girl. And I also take care of my mother and my sister right now. But I call myself a lifelong Fosterian, because I'm usually here quite often. And if people don't see me now, when there's a problem, I'll be in and out, because I love talking to people. I love making this city good, great. I think myself, this is about like the fourth time I've tried and run for council, but things came up that didn't work out. But this time, it's going to be different. We have immense amount of people here in Fosteria that are willing to do something, and not bad things, to get this place back to where it was, because I remember what it was like when we had a lot of businesses here in Fosteria. I go downtown now, and it's a ghost town, but it's coming back. I like the artwork that they have on there, and the things that they are trying to do. I want to get more things to do for the children, and hopefully, we can do that together. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question will be answered first by Mr. Manel, and then we will move down the table with the same question, and we'll proceed that way. The first question, you have two minutes to answer. Some of this was answered in your introduction, but I will ask it again, so we answer what parts you feel are still pertinent that you need to address. So again, you have two minutes. Please tell us why you are interested in serving on City Council. What special qualities, skills, and interests would you bring to the position? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on City Council?
Thank you, Sarah. That's a compound question. I think I answered my qualifications in my introduction. I have the ability to read financial statements, understand financial statements. I have run a large organization for many, many years, and I believe in servant leadership, which is giving back to the community. Over the years, I volunteered for many offices while I was working. I was on the hospital board for a long, long time, and I've been on the YMCA Board of Trustees on multiple occasions. As I look around Fosteria, I see a lot of opportunity. I see a lot of opportunity. We talked about swimming pool. I am really pleased to hear that all of the candidates recognize that we cannot bring that back as a swimming pool. That facility is too far gone. I worked at that swimming pool. That was my second job. My first job was lifesaving the YMCA. My second job was lifesaving that swimming pool. And I can remember sweeping the bottom of that swimming pool with a lead belt around my waist to hold me down, and a piece of tile over the broom handle to hold the broom handle down to brush the bottom of the pool with vacuum cleaner. So I know that pool intimately. I have a plan to return that pool to Parks and Recreation for the city, and I will explain that plan when time permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manel. All right, Mr. Burgoyne, you have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
Okay. Please tell us why you are interested in serving on City Council. What special qualities, skills, and interests would you bring to the position? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on Council?
Thank you. I'm interested, because I want to be able to serve. I've served in the military, as I said before, and I want to continue to serve. I want to get back into that, get back to the country, get back to the city, whatever I can do. Skills, I like to look at myself and say, I'm a common sense kind of person. If it doesn't make sense, I want to find out why, and I'm going to try and fix it, or find someone that can fix it. I don't have an educational background, Mr. Manel over here, but I do have a lot of experience being in the military. I have a lot of experience in manufacturing and logistics, so I've got that kind of background. What I'd like to accomplish is, I think everyone on this panel here is a business administrator, and we'd like to accomplish having this town be as good, if not better, than it was years ago. We've got a long way, but I think we've got the know-how, and we've got the backing from the town and the city folks to make this town what it used to be, if not better. I think that's what we all want to accomplish here.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Please tell us why you are interested in continuing to serve on City Council. What special qualities, skills, and interests do you bring to the position? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on City Council this next term?
I enjoy working with the citizens of Fosteria. I get calls, I answer all calls, try to take care of their problems. I enjoy working with FEDC to bring new businesses and jobs to town. I remember back in the 60s, you used to go uptown, and sidewalks would be full. I'd love to see that get half-full. Any way to get jobs and businesses, come here. I am four. I've been on council for 17 years, and I think I have all the ability to get things done, and I love doing the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, would you like to hear the question again?
I don't, chief.
Okay. Please tell us why you are interested in serving on City Council. What special qualities, skills, and interests would you bring to the position? Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on Council?
I have wanted to be on City Council, because I think I can deal with the public, and here, I'm going to listen to what they have to say, and then do my best to get it done. Like Tom, I answer my phone calls eventually. And I am looking to, if I make City Council, to build it back up to where it's supposed to be. We know that we can be better. We know we can do better with the businesses that we can get in town, not just little minor food services, but I mean, factories, maybe a big box store, something like that. Something where the people don't have to go to Finley or Tiffin to go to work. That's what I want here. And like Tom said, I want to see people up and down the street like we used to have. We have problems, but we got one of the best fire and police departments in the whole state. And they can get things done, too. And that's my objective right now.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, would you like me to repeat questions? Please tell us why you are interested in serving on City Council. What special qualities, skills, and interests would you bring to the position? Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on Council?
Most of the jobs I've had has been in customer service, so most from a people person. Past decade, every job I can say at that point has doubled people, so I'm good at going through what people are meeting, what they're wanting, and trying to handle the issues. The biggest thing is, like Mr. Spencer said, people want to help, people want to put back in the community. The more we can push that, the more we can do that at the city level, the more we're going to get back in the city, the more we're going to put it back to where it used to be. Will we return only what we had before? Maybe. Maybe we can do it better. That's really my goal as a council member, if I would get elected. Make our city great again, make it what it used to be, if not better. Let us shop local again. Let us have our jobs here, so we don't have to travel out of town. I remember when we used to never have to leave town for anything. You could get everything you needed. You had homes down in the Triangle. You could pretty much build a whole bathroom out of what he had in his shop. Get your meat cut, go to Kmart, get your clothes, get your shoes. I'd like to see some of that stuff come back again in some way or fashion.
Thank you. The next question will be asked first, Mr. Burgoyne, and you will have one minute to answer. What do you believe are the three greatest strengths of Fosteria?
There's a lot of growth ability within this town. The people, because there are a lot of people here, and they love this town, and we want to see it come back. And the third thing, I'd say current leadership. Come a long way since I've been here, of course. They've come a long way. So I think those are the three I'd advise them.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of Fosteria?
The first greatest strength is we have an excellent police and fire department, economic development, Chamber, everyone has done a great job. And the citizens of Fosteria, we have some of the best people around living here. We just need to get some industry back here, and get more jobs, bring people back to town so we can grow.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of Fosteria?
Tom took some of my answers.
It's okay.
Start off. Okay. I put the people up there at number one. Our safety forces and our street department, got to count them, and the water department, because they do count. We have a lot of good people that are working already. And back to the people again with their ideas. I go to different places now, and people call me out, and they've got ideas on what they want here in town. They don't want to leave town. I've been trying to get other businesses, I've contacted other businesses, getting to come here and take a look to see. And location is a good spot. We can do more, and we are growing to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of Fosteria?
As the other ones I've said, too, our location. With our location compared to villages around us, the major highways that come through here, we're an excellent spot for pretty much any business. Villages don't have a lot of revenue. People that can come here to buy here. I would say definitely our city services, too. Fire, EMS, our police, city workers, they're all willing, and they all do really excellent for job. And again, our citizens, too. They have good ideas. They know what they want. They know what they want here, and they're willing to do what they can to help, too. As long as we're working with them, they'll work with us.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Manel, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of Fosteria?
I would certainly agree with the others that location is our strongest resource. Having three mainline railroads cross through town, yes, I know, railroads can be a challenge, but that's transportation. We're also located within 500 miles of 2/3 of the population of North America. That is huge when you're trying to locate an industry. You are one-day truck delivery for any product you want to ship to 2/3 of the population of the country. Number two, we have very strong utilities and residential. of the country. Number two, we have very strong utilities and reservoirs. We have cheaper electric than many. We have cheaper gas than many. We have more water than most. Finally, this is a tremendously safe community in which to raise a panic. Kudos to our safety forces.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Mr. Lake. He will also have a minute to answer this question. What do you believe are the three greatest areas for improvement within Fostoria?
Room for improvement, if you're saying.
Yes, area, three areas of improvement for Fostoria.
Three areas of improvement would be to get more factories here to bring jobs. And the more industry you have, the more, it's going to bring more business and people to town. And we, we need all that. We have excellent parks here and nice places to go.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, we also have one minute. What do you believe are the three greatest areas for improvement within Fostoria?
Wow. Besides, I think the first one would be having something for the young adults and children to do. Because I remember we used to have a teen center that we could go to, plus a skating rink. We could do things. You can't do anything anymore, except sit at home and, and, and play with your video games. But I can't do video games. Also, we need to get business back in Fostoria, factories of some sort, or some other kind of business where they hire a lot of people. And our playground area, that's back to kids again, but that's a strength that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, what do you believe are the three greatest areas for improvement within Fostoria?
Three biggest areas would be bringing more industry back to town, more activities for youth and kids to do so that, and keep them busy. They don't get in trouble. And continue to clean up on our unused properties or properties that are vacant that are, have no businesses in them. Three biggest areas that I see.
Thank you. Mr. Manal, what do you believe are the three greatest areas for improvement within Fostoria?
Well, number one would be the financial situation of the city. We cannot continue to be under financial distress and under the auditor state, so that's, that's number one. Number two would be our streets and sidewalks. If you walk a lot in town, the sidewalks are in terrible shape. And, and number three would probably be enforcing some of our zoning codes, keeping some properties up as they ought to be, so that as you drive around town, you don't see dilapidated houses or other problems, houses that are burned and still standing.
Thank you. Mr. Bergai, what do you believe are the three greatest areas for improvement within Fostoria?
I'd like all the ones the gentleman said so far, I'd like to include downtown revitalization, manufacturing slash factories, bring those back. We need more businesses here. Financial situation as well. Like I said, for it's improved, but we, we don't want to be under a microscope. So those are our three, those are the things I feel.
Thank you. The next question, you will have one minute to answer. Listen carefully. The question is long, but the answer is, is fairly short. And this will, let's see, this will start with Mr. Spencer. City council must render decisions regarding the implementation of policies and/or programs that may be somewhat difficult. As a member of council, there may be instances when you personally disagree with something or know the decision will be unpopular, but it is necessary for the greater good of the community. Do you feel you can separate personal opinions and make unpopular decisions for the benefit of the community? Please elaborate as to why you do or do not feel you may accomplish this.
My answer would be yes. I can separate the two. Because if we have a problem that difficult, I'm going to reach out to the people in the fourth ward. And then I want to hear their feedback. And I'll give it, and then I'll make my decision from that.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, would you like me to repeat the question?
Do the same way Mr. Spencer does. I mean, we're here to serve our ward. My personal opinion doesn't weigh into it. It's my ward. If there's a difficult decision or difficult policy implement, whether it's popular or unpopular, it's my ward that needs to make that decision. What the ward decides is the way I would go, and that's the way I will represent myself on city council, as I, again, I represent, potentially represent ward one.
Thank you. Mr. Manal, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. I can certainly separate personal from what's best for the city, and what we want is what's best for the city. If you run a business, you make a lot of unpopular decisions. You get some nasty letters. You get threats. I've been through that. I've been there, done that. I can continue to do that as a member of city council.
Thank you. Mr. Bergai, would you like me to repeat the question?
That's fine. My answer would be yes. Everyone's spoken so far, same thing. We are, we represent our respective wards. So we would take that into greater consideration over personal beliefs or personal motivations. So definitely, that comes, the ward comes first, city.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, would you like me to?
My answer would be yes. I'm over seventeen years. I've had a lot of ordinances, resolutions and stuff go up that I didn't agree with. We have to make those decisions, keep the city running, no matter what people tell you. Sometimes it's very unpopular with people, but you still have to pass that ordinance because the city has to survive. You have to be able to separate your personal feelings from all those, and I've done a lot of it in seventeen years. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next question will be answered first by Mr. Kaiser. You will have one minute to answer this. How have you already been volunteering or serving in the city?
I do something to do with my kids now. When time permits, COVID has been a little harder. I take them out to the parks quite a bit. We will work through, around the reservoirs, the parks, and we do trash pick up. Throw bags in the stroller, go through, keep it clean. The more we can keep our parks clean, the more we will instill self-pride in them. It's less the city workers are going to have to do, and it's more of our involvement. It's more the areas that I've volunteered in at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Manal, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. I think I've already answered the question. I'm currently serving on the Fostoria Financial Planning and Supervision Committee. I'm currently serving on the Fostoria Charter Review Committee. I've been on the board of trustees of a hospital for many, many years, served as president of that board. Also been on the board of YMCA for many, many years, been president of that board. I have spent my life volunteering within the city of Fostoria.
Thank you. Mr. Bergai, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's fine. Volunteering for the city, I haven't had any opportunity, but Mr. Manal is, I'd like, like to be, I don't know how to approach it, to get on some of these committees and boards. Like I said, this is me, my first step in trying to get into city government. But volunteering, I've helped in, I helped with cleaning up the areas at the parks, coming up with our, other ideas, bringing them up with the, with the city. So those, I haven't had a whole lot of opportunities and capabilities, but yes, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever I can.
Thank you. Mr. Lake?
Yes. I basically haven't been on a lot of committees, other than appointed by council agents on the finance committee and airport committee. And I'd like to see all those keep going. But I drive town, and if I see some bad words, my word or not, I contact zoning and get them to try to fix a problem. And you have to oversee the whole town to keep everything looking good.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. For Mr. Captain, I am a member of the CIR team, which is a group out of, based now in Tiffin. It used to be the Fostoria Emergency Corps. Right now, they're out at the high school helping to distribute food, well, elementary school, excuse me. But I do a lot of like traffic control. If there's a fire, then I'm out on that. But if anybody needs anything, I usually get a telephone call, chief of police, fire department, even the mayor's office. Yeah, I'll do it. I'll help any way I can.
Thank you. Right. This next question, you will have two minutes to answer, and the first answer will be Mr. Manal. Social media is a large component of today's society, and many here today are active on social media platforms. While this is a great tool, it can also be an incredibly inaccurate resource. What are the most important steps the city can take to enhance its relationship and communication with its citizens? Would you like me to repeat that?
No, I think I understand the question. I'm not sure how to answer the question. I think the most important thing the city has to do is just be upfront and honest with their operations, what they're doing, where they're going. I think the city webpage could be improved. There are some great examples of wonderful city webpages out there that do a great job of communicating. Not only, not only do they have the charter and all of the ordinances listed on them, they have the calendars of events, they have when meetings are held, they have resources to access those meetings because they're all public meetings, all of those types of things. I think that would be the primary way. Under the current circumstances with the finances of the city, I don't see how they could go out and hire a social media director to communicate with all of that. So I, I think just an enhanced webpage would be the most critical part of that.
Thank you. Mr. Bergai, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I've got it. I agree with Mr. Manal, but the city webpage does need a little enhancement. I think that one other thing too is, yes, the city does, I think it does need to do more in getting some more social outreach. One of the ideas that I had, or was posed to me, was for the city to have its own Facebook page. One step, one step more is each ward, city councilman can have their own ward Facebook page, so that they can put information out to this specific ward, they can get feedback from the, from people that ward are outside of that, as well as the city, if it's city-wide, can we put out through the city, city page. It's just everything going, social, especially with the advent of everything that's been going on for the last year. So I think that something we really need to investigate and move in, move into getting more techno, technological, technologically advanced and get information out on a more expedition map, expedition map, sorry. So those, that's how I feel. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
Social media is a large component of today's society, and many here today are active on social media platforms. While this is a great tool, it can also be an incredibly inaccurate resource. What are the most important steps the city can take to enhance its relationship and communication with its citizens?
City's webpage could use some updates, but it gives a lot of information and places to go. And you can find Peter Waterbill there. And the great thing about this Zoom meetings is you can go to, look at the past meetings and listen to what was happening. And that's a great, that's a great thing. We didn't used to have that. And it's really nice to be able to go back and if you miss something, listen to the meeting and learn and keep the stuff that you need to know.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Social media is a large component of today's society, and many here today are active on social media platforms. While this is a great tool, it can also be an incredibly inaccurate resource. What are the most important steps the city can take to enhance its relationship and communication with its citizens?
A lot of people here have suggested going Facebook. I think that's the last place to go. Because that's the most misinformation that you're going to get is on Facebook because it is out there now, usually wrong. So the speed of the technology now and getting the news out, it puts newspaper like a couple days behind. If you can get on Facebook and get your people to actually understand it, and having somebody to get the information out there fast, because every time they hear a siren, they want to know what's going on. It's just not possible. I think the police department has a pretty good thing going on with their Twitter feed, and they also put things out on Facebook. The city, he, he does pretty good on Facebook. Our mayor does pretty good on Facebook right there because he's always out there taking pictures. I worked with the review giants, and I think he does more than I do sometimes. But of course, mine's better. But we can go with that. But we need to get on Twitter. That's another big base one, but I'm not doing TikTok. Okay. And then we'll see what the people have to say about that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. Big things, transparency, anything we can communicate to general public what's going on, so it can squash the rumors. That way it can squash out the negativity. So it does know what's going on. Obviously, Zoom meetings at some point will come to an end. Council members will back to their person. Find a way to continue to keep those video sessions available to the general public for the ones that may work or cannot attend the meetings. Big thing, that way they can go, okay, this Tuesday's council meeting, I can go back, I can review that meeting. More improvements to our city website too would help. Maybe we can put on there more of the zoning ordinances. If someone has a question, they can go on there and look. It would be the big areas I would say.
Thank you. Right. Our next question, you will have one minute to answer, and Mr. Bergai will answer first. If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?
I think the city, as like I said, it's in the past, it's come a long way. I, I think one of the things that I would, one of the things that pops into my mind, and it's been floating around there a while, you go to some of the other towns smaller than you Fostoria. And this might be a little, but I think it, over, over time, would cost, would, would save a lot of money. LED lights, LED streetlights. I think that'd be one thing. And then also just kind of look at all the different contracts that are out there that we're currently looking at or we currently have, and just see if there's anything that we can trim or find a way of, of saving more money.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
If elected, what three steps would you take? If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing?
First step is continue working with FADC to get all the grants and the money to help fund the departments, work with the fire department and the police department, because they, they go looking for grants also. And keep the city income tax coming, the more workers we got, the more we got coming in. And there's a lot of room for improvement, but we need to work on everything that we have to win right now.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I've got this one. I would start with getting more businesses in town. And also expand on our safety forces. Some of their equipment's kind of obsolete right now and needs updated. And I would, I still go back to the kids and, and younger people having something to do here in town. So that's a plus, because they're willing to do something if we can have something. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. As most of the other candidates said, the big one's pushing to bring more business in town, more business, that's more taxes, more revenue for the city. Gives us the opportunity for more people to move here, which again brings more money as well. Grants is another area we can continue to keep looking at. Grants we get, that get a little bit of this quality, is cost saving. Looking at others too, like the lighting, that was a big one. We can push away from the old style lighting. New LED does save money, it's saving on maintenance costs, it's less we have to work on getting up there to change them. Look at any other traffic lights that maybe we could get rid of, that maybe an area that we don't need it so much, we'll save us money there. Just little things like that, looking through our maintenance, see where we can maybe make an upgrade that so something won't cost as much maintenance wise and save us money down the road.
Thank you. Mr. Manal, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have the question. As an elected member of city council, there has been very little that I can individually do to really make a change there. There are only two things that I would do, both of which are targeted to get us out of the financial situation that we are in, under financial distress with the state auditor's office. Number one would be to implement those recommendations at the state auditor's office in the city auditor's office, so that we can get out of fiscal emergency. And number two is to restrict spending in the city to the point where we have a 50% reserve, in other words, a six months' reserve in expenses for the city. That then gets us out under the city financial distress situation, and we can run our own city without having the auditor overseeing us and paying the state auditor's office to do what we should be doing ourselves.
Thank you. All right, our next question will be answered first by Mr. Lake, and you will all have two minutes to answer. The Charter Commission is currently meeting to make changes to the city's charter. What is your opinion of a city manager form of government, and what is your opinion on other proposed changes and discussions of the city charter?
City manager, I think would cost the city more money. They would be overseen by council members, would be the boss, you'd have seven bosses. It would be awful for a person to be setting in that position. I, I think we should stay with the strong mayor. And as far as them wanting to change the wards, I think the, the four wards is the way they should stay, instead of trying to reduce them to two or three all at large, because as a ward person, I have a lot of people calling me from my ward, I also have people calling from the other wards, but I take care of both of them. It doesn't matter which one calls, but I still think you need to keep the wards, one, two, three, and four wards to keep the town section, so one person has that area to take care of.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
The Charter Commission is currently meeting to make changes to the city's charter. What is your opinion of a city manager form of government, and what is your opinion on the other proposed changes to the city charter?
I don't think we need a city manager and council government, because like Tom said, that's an awful lot of bosses standing, you're not going to agree on a lot of things. So somebody's got to take control over that. I'm not exactly sure what other changes you're talking about, except for the board thing. That's going to be difficult to do. But I could see it if we, they take one ward out, add three wards, and down to, sorry about the phone, it's not that distressing. But I think we can do more at, have the other one at large and the three wards. That might be better, because I'm going to hear from all kinds of people. We are all going to hear from all over the city, so that's just a fact.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. Definitely think staying with the current stuff we have with having a mayor is a more or better interest. Too many chiefs, not enough Indians, we may find that moving to where we have seven bosses, we have less progress, more people butt heads and less we've done. Mayor's done us a fine job at this point, I don't see why we should change what's working. Always been a motto, if they broke, don't fix it. Ward redistribution, I know we've done in the past, we used to have five wards, now we're down to four. Maybe looking at it again to make the wards a little more equal would help. I know there are a few that are even unsure to where ward lines stop. So we can maybe clarify, clarify the ward areas a little bit better, so everybody understands what wards they're in. But as Mr. Spencer said, we will hear from other wards. So regardless, I think we should stick with at least having four wards and what the mayor's position is, we do now.
Thank you. Mr. Manal, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, but I have to give the answer with a caveat. As a member of the Charter Review Commission, I am not speaking for any, for the commission or for the group. I am only speaking as an individual, one individual on a commission of 15 people. I am a strong advocate for a city manager form of government. We need a professional manager to run this city. That would keep us out of financial difficulties that we are in now. Seven bosses, you don't understand what a city manager form of government is. It is putting the city in a form of government similar to every corporation in America, where the CEO works for a board of directors. City council becomes a board of directors. It actually makes it easier to become a councilman, because you don't have to deal with all of the committees that you're currently dealing with. I keep hearing the argument of cost. We can't afford a council management form of government. What are you spending today? You have a safety service director, you have a strong mayor who is paid significantly more than a council member. You run the numbers and you support, you support your statement with data. Don't just say we can't afford it. Understand what you're spending today and what you will spend in the future, and you will find very quickly that it is a wash. So let's professionalize city government, let's bring in somebody who has a degree in city manager form of government, only bring state university, give such a degree as do most of the state universities in Ohio. There's an old saying, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results is the definition of stupid.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manal. Mr. Berga, would you like me to repeat the question?
Thank you, Mr. Manal, for that input. I will stand on, I'm indifferent at this point, in regards to either one. I need, I would need to do more research and more background based on what you just spoke of. So I would be open to either. As far as the wards are concerned, I agree with Brandon, with Eric, but if you go and you do a Google search for city Fosteria wards, an ancient map comes up that is barely readable. So, and I, I do believe it has the five wards on it. So that would be, I would, I would be for looking at it, equaling, equalizing the ward areas out, and redracting the map, redoing the map, and making it readable for everyone to see, because you can't tell. I mean, what was it, a couple of years ago, when I was, when I was trying to do, go up for the at-large, I remember there was a, there was a newer map on Google search, but it's no longer there. I, I had to go back into my history and see if I could find it, and I couldn't find it. So I'm definitely for looking at it, redoing the map, because it is very old and very unreadable.
Thank you. All right, our next question, you will all have two minutes to answer, and Mr. Spencer will be the first to answer this question. How would you encourage and/or strengthen enforcement of city regulations to make businesses, tenants, and homeowners keep their property clean and in compliance?
I would work really closely with zoning, making sure that they're out there every day. I know the poor zoning person gets yelled at all the time, but somebody's got to do that. If these people don't want to keep their place up, you've got to pay the cost, and, because we can get it done. And that's who I would work with on that one, with zoning.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. Same thing as Mr. Spencer said, zoning out there more to get on the, on the properties and the businesses that are violating city codes and city ordinances, make them more aware of, the more pressure we put on them as a city, the more they're going to want to stay in compliance, because they're not going to want zoning or an official at their door all the time, and they're not going to pay the fines. The more pressure we keep on them, the better they will keep their properties, the better they will keep their businesses and stay within compliance of what our city ordinances and codes are.
Thank you. Mr. Manal, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I understand the question. I think the police force could, could contribute tremendously in this particular area, because they cover every street in town, they see what's out there and things. So reporting for zoning would make a big difference. Under our current financial situation, our zoning is very limited, but we need to issue citations. There are very few citations that can get issued, and if everybody understands that there will be no citations, there is no reason to meet the code or to follow the rules. So I think you need to have citations. That word will spread very rapidly, social media again. But the other thing you need is you need to encourage some folks just to do improvements, because if you clean up one house in a neighborhood, other houses in the neighborhood do likewise. Nobody wants to live in the messiest house on the street. The challenge that we have in Fosteria is that we're a rental community, we have more renters than homeowners. So some of the enforcement needs to be against landlords.
Thank you. Mr. Berga, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, it's fine. All right. Like Mr. Manal said there, yes, I'm kind of mixed on this one. I agree with zoning and I agree with the police department, we have to do it with some tact as well. I think more so we need to go after, go after landlords, like you were saying, the rental, the rental folks, because there's some people that just don't care, and they hound their, their tenants, and they're not fixing things, they're not doing things that they need to be, as well as those individuals that own property, they have abandoned houses. I've got an abandoned house that's just two doors down from where I live, it had a fire in it. It's still standing, and it's got the fire, fire department bullseye on it, like they're going to tear it down, but they put that up there a year and a half ago, it hasn't bludgeoned. We need to go after the people that own those properties. And if they're out of state, fine, we need to go after them, hold them accountable. If we don't hold them accountable, why would anyone, why would anyone that's living here going to want us, going to want to abide by the rules? And these guys are going to go ahead and do it? Fine, I'm not going to do, I'm not going to deal with, with zoning at all. We need to start someplace, and I think the big thing is the rental properties and the abandoned properties. We need to go after those people and hold them accountable.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, would you like me to repeat the question?
We need a zoning department with a zoning inspector that understands the laws. And when you call them and ask them a question, that they give you a call back. Here recently, I've made numerous calls to zoning, I haven't got no calls back from a new zoning person at all, and that is not good. We also need to get the courts so that they take what zoning turns into the courts to get them, so that they'll look at the case instead of letting it go on for five months, which they have done previously. But we have to have the right people working in zoning and the right laws for them to work with, so that they can get their job done.
Thank you. All right, this will be our last question for this morning, and you will all have one minute to answer. The first to answer this question will be Mr. Kaiser. If someone came to you with a proposal on a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, a road, a bridge, et cetera, how would you evaluate whether that project was worth implementing?
As for myself, as an citizen I can make on my own, if someone would bring me a proposal like that, that is something that needs to be brought to all the council and to the appropriate departments within the city. That way it can be evaluated with tact, and with, again, with people that have the experience to know if that's something our community can use, not use, is it financially sound, is it not sound, is that something myself that I can handle?
Thank you. Mr. Manal, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
If someone came to you with a proposal on a new piece of public infrastructure in our city, a road, a bridge, et cetera, how would you evaluate whether that project was worth implementing?
I'm struggling to figure out why we might need another street in town or a bridge. I think that basically you'd have to lay it out and see what other properties infected. I think that you would also have to evaluate it from a net economic perspective to determine whether or not it would benefit, because it's obviously going to be a cost, and I assume if it's a city public project, it's going to be spent city dollars to do it. So at this point in time, I would probably discourage it unless I saw a tremendous return on investment.
Thank you. Mr. Berga, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm on, I feel the same way, Mr. Kaiser there. I, that's something, I would take that in, and I'd have to present it to the city council, mayor, and the proper departments, to find out whether, you know, like the experts and professionals come up with, if, like you were saying, if it's economical, if it's worthwhile, if we're able to, and if it's, if it's got a return on. So it wouldn't be something I would do, it'd be something I would take in and say, okay, I'll take your suggestion, and we'll address it, and we'll go, now we'll get back to you.
Mr. Lake?
Any infrastructure like that should be brought to all of councils as a whole, and discussed with the mayor's safety service director and engineer if possible, and maybe even have FADC look at it and see what needs to be done with it. You need to contact all the people involved and discuss it to find out what you need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, would you like to hear the question again?
I think I have this. I would tell this person to bring it in front of council. I would tell this person to bring it in front of council because that's not a one-person decision that has to be made. If it's feasible, then the whole city council and of course, uh, the other, the mayor, engineers, planning, zoning, all that, it's going to have to get involved and if it's worthwhile, then it'll be taken up that way.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will give you the opportunity to have three minutes to offer your closing remarks and then if you continue in the order that the questions were asked, the first to give their closing remarks this morning will be Mr. Manow.
I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for providing this opportunity to speak. I look forward to serving on the city council and to working with current council members. I think the city, as somebody else said, has passed its low point. We are, we are improving, we are on our way back up. To think that we will, um, rise rapidly is, is, is difficult. We have a long ways to go. We need to take baby steps to improve as we grow, but the, uh, the opportunities are here, our location is a tremendous location. We have a lot of services for industry if we can attract industry here, but to think we're going to bring back an auto light or a Chrysler or another company like that is very difficult. So key and parcel to our success will be taking care of the businesses we have here now. They are the ones that are most likely to grow employment, to hire more people and to make this a better place to live because they're the ones that are paying the taxes and support our schools and support our city. Thank you.
Mr. Berga.
Um, I'd like to also thank the Chamber of Commerce for having this opportunity here. Like to thank gentlemen on the panel here, appreciate everyone's input, uh, from here coming out to, to at-large individuals here, thank you very much. I'd like to have the pleasure of serving the city and the city council with, uh, work with them and do whatever I can for the ward and the city to make the city a better place that we've talked about. I'd really like to, I have the opportunity, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lake.
Yep. I'd like to be re-elected to the fourth ward so I can continue working for the citizens of Fosteria. Our economic situation is getting better and we need to continue what we've been doing and our infrastructure is getting better. FEDC's bringing new jobs to town. We need to continue to do that. Would like to continue, continue working for the citizens of Fosteria.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer.
Yes. I'd like to thank, uh, Sarah and, uh, part timer over there and the rest of you gentlemen for being here. If elected, uh, I'd really like to see change happen a little faster than baby steps. I think we did the baby steps, uh, working our way out of this fiscal emergency that we're in right now. Yes, we're not going to get a Chrysler or an auto light, but, uh, there are other businesses that would be interested, uh, not just because of our rail situation, but, uh, we have, uh, a lot of talent right here in Fosteria and I hope to use it by this. I like to get out and talk to the people. They'll tell me what's going on, then I'll bring it back and we'll discuss it, but we're going to get something done because Fosteria needs to be better and we can be.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser.
I'd like to thank everybody that was, you were coming for, again, for setting this event up so we had a, an opportunity to introduce ourselves, uh, make ourselves a little more known. You know, if I would get elected to council, I want to be a fresh face, uh, bring some new ideas to board, uh, get more people involved. It's been said before in the papers, uh, I can't remember which councilman said it, we don't have many people that run for these positions anymore. And again, like for my order, I'm running unopposed. Did I have to show up here today? No, but it's important. It's important if we get new faces, younger faces that are willing to do things, it ensures, it gives self-pride, makes people want to do more with their community. The more we get the people to do things, the more we can improve our city. And if someone wanted to do, get out there, get people more involved, uh, don't let them be in, in the dark of what's going on. Get the information out there. This is what's going on in council means this will be happening. Get it all out there, get people more involved.
Thank you. And thank you to each and every one of you for coming this morning. We do appreciate your time and we greatly appreciate your interest in serving the city of Fosteria, running for council. From a chamber perspective, we find it very important, um, that we have people that are interested in running for council. So thank you very much. We wish you the best of luck and have a wonderful day.